Okay, the first order of business is under our business is the water project county.
I've met with Mr. Worcester twice. He's trying to get started, but he don't want to start in it pouring down rain. Last I heard from him, I think it was Thursday or Friday, he planned on starting today if it wasn't pouring down rain, of course, you know what happens. He just waiting for the weather to break so we can get started.
So that could be June before the winter breaks.
His starting date is tomorrow, which is just a few days' date, so.
I'm not allowed to speak. The cut board wouldn't hear. Okay, the next thing is the second reading on ordinance two eleven one eighteen on
Is this just amending the budget for this, or is this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm making like an approved second reading.
What's up?
Nancy Zephras is coming for the pump out. I got done more than a day.
Order number twenty ten one one eight, and I wanted to amend the two thousand ten eleven budget for the water and sewer fund, whereas the city of Tennessee Ridge has previously adopted operating budget for the fiscal year two thousand ten eleven. As the board of commissioners for the city of Tennessee Ridge has determined that the appropriate appropriation interest incidence for city of Tennessee Ridge funds to be amended for the water sewer fund. Everybody at the ordinance, the board of commissioners for the city of Tennessee Ridge just follows section one, continuous inspection and monitoring system, five thousand two hundred fifty one dollars ninety five cents, and section two, all resolutions ordinance in conflict with this provision are to be amended.
Skip over to the call since it's kind of down here yet. Skip over to it. Skip over to the business. Yeah, I think I seen it coming in. Ordinance number two ten one nineteen, wanting to amend the budget for the water and sewer
This is a first reading.
This is first reading on this.
It's ordinance number twenty ten one nine, and I wanted to amend the two thousand ten eleven budget for the water and sewer fund.
Motion to approve.
One second.
All those in fiber? We have ordinance number two thousand ten one twenty. An ordinance to amend the two thousand ten eleven budget for the water and sewer fund. This will be first reading. Hang on a second.
This is all transfers too?
No, no.
No new money or anything.
Motion to approve. One second. All those in fiber? Next time under our own business is the city hall. Do you have any updates?
Yes, I do. Y'all asked me at the last meeting to stop by and talk to Mr. Seffrey about the engineering of it. I did. He showed up tonight. I have also talked to the three property owners that y'all requested me speak to. The clearance building is at two fifty now. I talked to Mr. Potter at the church. It's still at one twenty-five, and I spoke to Mr. Frazel at the corner of Grace Crossing, and it is negotiable. He said he's nothing far from the one twenty-five. He said he could split it up into whatever we wanted to split up into, or sell it at the whole thing. But I guess it was more or less y'all making an offer.
How much, how many acres was that up there?
Three point nine, three point something. I won't say nine. But that's kind of where we are. I'll make the decision. There's one thing that we need to kind of look at if we go with the church site down here. We need, well, we will probably have to get somebody in to check for asbestos, but then as we're getting real the best of the money, I'm sure we'll probably have to have it checked to make sure that, and if it is, we'll have to go through the process of the abating of And Mr. Wright, he come up with us, we called him, me and the mayor had a meeting with him, and I asked him to be here, and he had, I told him about what we was looking for in city hall, and he come up with some pictures and some blueprints, and he's here to speak to the board tonight on, about what the engineering fee will run. If you don't mind, I'll turn it over to Mr. Seff.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Again, we really appreciate, just appreciate the call and appreciate you all, you know, thanking us enough to come, you know, having mayor and city managers come talk to us about this. So just wanted to say thank you a lot, just, you know, just for the, just for talking with us. We're firm located in here, we do work in this, all across the state. We've got some stuff going on. Far south is Alabama line to Montgomery County, got some stuff going on in Humphreys County and all around the area, and so we're just really pleased that we can, you know, just come and show you a few ideas that we had for Tennessee Ridge. And I've got, got a little bit of literature here that I can, that I can hand out, if that's okay. Just to kind of give a, I went ahead and just put our proposal in writing for you, and I'll give, you can just give it those however y'all like to. There's two full copies there, and I also have some other copies that don't have the company pamphlet in the back for your, for your use also. It just, it outlines, I wanted to go ahead and put everything, pass those around if you like, and just, these are also just some of our, in a nutshell, of what we do there. You want to pass those, pass those out. That's another brochure. I've also got, I've got some, the way I like to do this, if y'all got, I don't want to delay your whole, your process here, but I do have, also brought like a picture board in to show you some of those photos that I had shown with, shown Mr. Dunne, but about a couple of examples of some buildings that are out there now that might be just something for you to, for you to consider. And then we can, we can go over what's, what's in that proposal. I don't know where the best place to, just book it, and I can pass this around also. It has, it has the photos in it. I'll start this over on this side. And these are of a town we do some work in, down in southern middle Tennessee, that you gotta see some examples. And obviously, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different ways that, that you can go with this, and whenever, you know, whenever, no matter who. We just took.
Brown, I may include some of this stuff, if you don't mind.
He already unplugged his phone for me. He does. And again, I can bring this, this up close, that book has the same photos in there, but just as a, I apologize to people out here sitting, can't see that, but what we did is there's a, and we took a look at two separate buildings that after, kind of just based on just some general, some general ideas that Mr. Dunne had, had mentioned that you all need. One is ADA compliance. I know you're gonna have to be ADA compliant. The building over on your, on your, I guess it'd be your right hand, your right hand side, excuse me, your left over there is a, that is a five thousand square foot building that is, was built, I think, two years ago? Three years ago, and just kind of an example, that's, that might be a little bit bigger than what you're, what you're thinking about there, but you can see it has a, it has a brick, brick front facade to it. Actually, this, this building has, has brick all the way around, and probably Mr. Dunne had some really good ideas on saving, saving some money there. That might, it might be something, you might be looking at, at trying to go with a different, maybe a different material in the, you know, in the back, like a metal or something like that, but that's where we, we also visited another site, because it's a much smaller, this is a, this is actually a utility office. It's a much smaller, smaller building. I think it's more like around fifteen hundred square, square feet, and some of the features that, that, you know, you might be able to make, make benefit of here, Mr. Dunne had mentioned was like a drive-up, having a drive-up bill pay window. So there's, there's several, you know, there's, there's features of both of these buildings that I think you could, you know, you could look at and come up, you know, you may have your own, you know, have your own ideas about, but it's just something to kind of, kind of get a, get a look at. One other thing that we wanted to, wanted to call out, in this middle, middle pane of this, this poster here, there's a community room area that, that, that this, the larger building has in it, and it serves as both our council chambers, and the chairs are removable so that you can, you know, they can have events and things like that in the same, in the same room, kind of a multipurpose, can serve as council chambers and even serve as a multipurpose area. You know, that's, that was one of the nice features of this, and you know, obviously that could be configured in a, in a lot of different, a lot of different ways. This, what we, what we were thinking, and after looking, and again, it kind of depends on, on the budget you're looking at, but if you, we were kind of thinking of a sort of a hybrid approach between these two concepts and coming up with a building that's more like about twenty-four hundred square feet, as a, you know, kind of example to go by, and at a hundred dollars a square foot, you know, you're looking at a building to cost, you know, would probably cost around two hundred forty thousand dollars for the building. Now, that can be obviously the size, and that can be adjusted, but that's just kind of a, kind of a, a roundabout figure of, you know, what something like this might cost. And, you know, if we're, if y'all would like us to, to design a building like that for you, you know, the percentage is approximately eight percent is what, is what we would, is what we would charge to take this thing all the way from, you know, the conceptual, you know, getting down, making sure you all are getting, getting a building that you want, working through that whole process, to all the, all the design, the architectural, the structural, the plumbing, HVAC, you know, and making sure that the building is compliant. I would do that for about eight percent, which on a building of two hundred forty thousand, I think comes up to like nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars is, is what, is what the engineering fee would be on something like this. I wanted to be very upfront about what we would charge for, you know, for taking this, and that's also getting the project, taking a committed bid, you know, to meet with your municipal requirements there, all the state requirements that are, that are present with that. So that's, that's, that would be our, a good estimate. Now, you know, if the price of this goes up, then the fee, we would talk to you about the fee being adjusted if it's a lot, you know, because it's just gonna actually cost more to design a bigger building. If something was smaller, we would also talk with you about, you know, adjusting that price, that price downwards too, on a smaller building, so, but.
The thing Tony had talked to you about was about a sixty before, or somewhere in that, in that size. And does, does this cost include the periodic inspections throughout the construction of it, or will that be an addition?
Well, that would be, that would be an additional, additional cost. Now, this, we're just, you know, would depend on the scope of that. If you want somebody there every day, which you probably don't need, that would be obviously more expensive, but if we're just gonna come up there on a periodic basis, you know, have somebody come up once a week to check on things, or an as-needed basis, you're not probably talking about maybe, maybe another percent, or something like that. That's just a ballpark, and we could give you some, some firm figures on that, but if it's just a kind of a periodic spot check, it's not gonna be a lot of, you're not talking about a lot of, you know, a lot of.
This ain't exactly like a water line where you really need an inspector there all the time. You know, just a periodic, maybe once a week or so, just to make sure no corners are being cut anywhere.
Yeah.
That'd be, would be my suggestion.
I think that's a good suggestion, and also something too, you know, again, we can get into a lot of these, if we're so, you know, lucky to be able to help y'all further with this, we could get into the details, but just some other ideas that we could try to, you know, try to keep this, you can see both these structures are not overly elaborate. They don't look like they necessarily would belong like in, in the middle of a major downtown area. They look, to me, they look like something that you could get a lot of local, you get local contractors to be, give very good prices on, I think, be very comfortable, you know, get a lot of local competition, which I think is key here to keeping your price down in construction. So that's a couple of these concepts, you know, and obviously, we go in a lot of different directions with this, but that's, you know, some of the, some of the reasons we picked these two, because they were, and I believe they were both done in that town, they were both, they were done using local, you know, local contractors were able to come in and compete without, you know, without having to go to, to a lot of the bigger, the bigger cities to get contractors out of.
So like when me, you and the mayor met down there, you know, kind of what me and him had in mind, that we took from the board was maybe something along the lines of metal building with a brick facade in the front. That's kind of, that's kind of the way that, you know, the cost-effective way if this happens is to do that.
And that's, and that's exactly right. And to kind of give you, on that note, I think we told, to give you an idea, at least there we had actual numbers on these buildings. Your big building over there with all brick all the way around, you know, it was, it was around, it's, it's over five thousand square feet, I think maybe, it was maybe fifty-five hundred square feet. It was around six hundred thousand to build three years ago. This building, which is a much more economical, maybe even if you want it bigger, still a much more economical style to go with, was around sixty thousand dollars, and that was, that was ten years ago. So I mean, it's gonna be more expensive than that now, but that just kind of gives you an idea of the, of the range that you could, that you could be in. And I agree with Mr. Dunne, but if you could take, take this and make it a, make it bit, make it a little bit bigger to get you the space that you need, and, you know, maybe make the front a little bit more decorative to, to, you know, to match, you know, the spirit of the town there, you could, I believe you could, you know, I believe you could do that, and probably come away, you know, come away with a, a much more economical, you know, building to build.
So let me stop you just a second.
Yes.
The difference here, and I know the price of course, but what's going on today, how these buildings here, these metal buildings, they, they wanna withstand some strong winds and, and, you know, the roof and everything like that, is that, like, you know, some of the winds that we've had here the last few days and stuff like that, is that, I know, I'm assuming the brick is stronger all the way around, but I mean, is that gonna withstand some pretty good winds?
Yeah, that's a very, very good question, Jim, and the answer is, is it designed properly, and that's what you have to make sure of. You know, you see a lot of barns and things that may be put up that aren't designed to a strict of a, a building code, and those would not, maybe not necessarily withstand, even though they might look, you know, similar, if you're just looking at it from a surface. Those buildings, you know, a shed or a, you know, equipment building is probably not gonna be built most of the time to the stricter standards as you would if you, if you were building one for occupancy. So that's where you, it would have to meet the same, both of these two buildings would have to meet the same, the same code, you know, if you wanted them to, and I realize that, that, you know, Tennessee Ridge building code, you know, may not have a, but we would wanna design this thing to where it would, where it would withstand, like you say, both of these would be equal as far as wind loads and things of that nature. What's a good question?
I mean, we hate to build something and then one big windstorm or tornado comes through, and we have to repair right off the bat.
That's a really good, really good question.
We get storms around here quite a bit.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it's a good question, and like I say, I would just, I would advise, you know, making sure that, 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 you know, the building codes are followed when you're, you know, when you're, when you're doing that, you know, prevent that problem. And any other, I guess I didn't even introduce my, my staff here. This is Mike Shepherd. Mike Shepherd is, I met Mike at the city, the city of Clor, he's retired from the city of Clor for what, thirty-two years?
Yeah. As a. Superintendent over the water, place water construction for thirty-two years.
And Matthew Wright, he's, he's currently, Mike's project manager, and Matthew also is, is up managing one of our projects on the, up in Montgomery County right now, and really glad to, that's my brother, really glad, really glad to have him on, he's doing a, doing a wonderful job too, and Cash Wright in the back with that, so we, when we say Wright engineering, there's a lot, a lot of Wrights involved, but we're, we're, we're really, I'm really appreciative to have, to have good staff here, and I appreciate the take, that they came up. Another thing too, that Mr. Dunne mentioned as far as, you know, going up and checking on those projects, the good thing is, why it's not gonna cost much is because we're, we're close, and if there's any problems with it, come by the office and we can, we'll talk about it. If I need to come up, come up to the site anytime, or have someone come up there, you know, if there's problems are going on, that's, that's another advantage we feel like that we can, you know, we can bring to the table for, you know, for local, you know, local communities, that makes it, you know, hopefully we make it a desirable, desirable.
Tell them about the police, the police on that.
Oh, yeah. But yeah, that's a good point. This, this, the brick building, the more expensive building, it also has, I know if you, you look at the front, it has kind of the three, the three gables there. The center gable is where you walk in, that's the lobby area, but the one to the, this bit, one to your right is a police department area, and I know, I realize that that may not, that could be something that could be omitted from a design like that to make it less expensive, or could be used for a different area. That's one reason the square footage on that one is so big for a town that's really, that town is really not, not a very big, you know, a large town, but it has, but they went ahead and made, they have a police department there, so that's what they, they use that part. So that could be modified, you know, in, and again, we could start from scratch with a set of plans too, there's, there's nothing to say that we, that we couldn't do that, but that's why, one reason why that, that building was built bigger than it probably really needed to be just for a city hall, just for a city hall building. I guess with, you know, any questions y'all have, and even after this meeting, just feel free to give me a call, I've got my card in there, and just, you know, we'll be happy to, to, to come up and to answer any questions that we can about, about anything as far as this goes.
They still turn it around.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Davis.
Well, that sort of crowd there can say it.
I'd like to thank the council here in Zalbier, and I'm gonna, I don't like to spend too long.
Thank you.
Got it? All right.
We've shared your time and presented.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm not trying to get in his, I promise you I'm not. This building is where they accept payments for the water and sewer and all that, and then this other one, it has the drive up here, and that other one, they pay taxes, you know, they pay their property tax down there, and that, that building, part of those photos don't do it justice, but now that is, it's not, it's not elaborate, it's not fancy, but it is useful. That, where they have their council, that, that is a nice, a nice area. They've got a permanent where they sit, and then all these chairs, they just moved them out when they have, when they're, but it's, it's sharp.
What were those?
Ardmore, Tennessee.
Ardmore, yeah.
Sixty-five South Exit One.
Yeah. It's a, and again, there are, you know, if we're, if y'all like us to go further with this, with this process, you know, we wanna make sure you get something that, that the city of Tennessee Ridge is gonna be proud of, and this may not be the answer, this is just some, some experience we've had with, with some buildings, but we could bring a wide array of photographs and some floor plan sketches that we could work directly with you all to, you know, to give them, to get it the way you, to get it the way you want it. So, you know, we really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to come by and, and talk to you about it, and, you know, we love to be able to do this work for you, to help you out, so just, if we can be of help, please, you know, please just let us know on that, and like I say, any questions that you all have, we'll certainly, certainly try to answer. Kent, is that?
Pretty well. Does that cover everything that y'all asked me to do last month? Kind of give you some ideas of what's going on. I guess the first thing, we're definitely gonna have to move forward with something, or we're gonna have to start holding meetings. Did you ever talk to her about that? Because I think we actually, after Main One, we may actually have to start holding our meetings in another building in another facility somewhere, the way I understood what she told us the last time she was down here. Because there's no way we're gonna have anything done by Main One, and we're just wanting to get a clarification that maybe they'll let us carry on here after, if we're making a good faith effort in trying to go forward with this is, is what we're hoping, but she never did really clarify when we asked her in here the other day, and we, we have tried to call back time to them, we have not been able to get a hold of them. But, you know, I guess the biggest thing the board gotta do now is just figure, you know, which piece of property do you want to sue? And then if you, if you want to go with Mr. Wright's engineering firm or whatever, there's, there's a couple of decisions that I feel have to be made, and then we can get back, as you said, hopefully within the next thirty to ninety days.
That's fine.
And get things to moving forward. But we do appreciate you showing up.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks.
Glad you got something to do.
Yeah, me too.
Do you want any more questions?
No, I've just got a remark on the next thing.
Do we, do we know about, roll development money to this thing yet or not in the exact time?
She talked about the last thing because she couldn't make a concrete change, but I can't remember the amount she quoted us on.
Five one thousand.
Was it five hundred thousand?
Four.
Four, three, five, or four, seven, about, that was the way it ended.
And that would acquire, that we could, we could borrow money to acquire land plus do a building through them, over forty years.
So they could include the land and the?
Yes, we could acquire land, make a land purchase with it, and build a city hall on it, and I think that was on, was forty years, is the longest they could.
What, with these buildings, what about parking issues? This doesn't seem like a problem out here or something.
It is, and that's, you know.
We need some more parking spaces.
The three locations that's on the table, they all have, all have or can have ample parking and easy access, because this is not the easiest place to get in and out of, either the fire hall parking lot or the city hall parking lot. And with the three, three lots that we have talked about, and I personally, do you know of any other property other than that that, that has accessibility plus? What we, those are the only three that I know of, right off the top of my head, that's, that's actually on the market. But it kind of gives us accessibility and a large enough area that we can, we can actually have a decent parking lot.
Now, that, roll development, if we decided to, I mean, that's new construction or?
New construction or remodel.
Or remodel.
Whatever we, whichever way we go, it's there for either one.
Had a four point two five percent for forty years, is what she quoted, because we calculated that, or I got it on the, on an amortization schedule, and aiming on that, at that rate would be two thousand one hundred sixty dollars a month.
And that was on a half a million, correct?
That's on half a million.
Which we're actually hoping to acquire land and build it stay under three fifty, is what the hope's on. That's kind of our, our goal that we're setting. If we do this, is to keep it as low as possible.
Could you, could you do something to think about, maybe, maybe not? Could you do something to think about, maybe, maybe not envision it all, but having a, you know, a structure for it to be expanded? Because that's something that, you know, in the past, I don't know that a lot of governments around haven't looked at, you know, growth and future expansion and things. And then they come up and then they've got to build something else where they don't have enough room before they know it.
Well, me and the mayor met with Seth. That was one of our things that we told him, whichever way we go or whatever we build, we definitely wanted to worry if it's 50 years down the road, they need to add on to it, it'll be easy to come back in and add on, you know, other than having to go find another location. And that's the key to having a big enough piece of property also, to where you can do, you know, if you need expansion tiers 25, 30 years down the road, you can have it. And the building, the size of me and the mayor, y'all may want something bigger, may want something smaller. We just gave them a ballpark figure of about what we kind of thought we had been talking about. And then it was a 40 by 60.
Well, Mike, like I was telling, only a second ago, I mean, unless I read this wrong, the census shows Tennessee Ridge actually has a bigger population than here and now.
Yes.
And I, I don't see that that might not continue to be the trend. And I'd rather have something, I mean, we're not thinking of a police department here, but 30 years from now, we may be. I'd rather have something that we could put that in easily than have to go back and redo something completely or find another land or something like that, you know, at the time. I mean, you got to build for the future instead of, and then to build for 50 years down the road, not just five, you know, or 10 even.
Well, that's the reason why I come, we come up with two different ideas, is because y'all as a governing body can make that decision on which way that you want to go with. We kind of give you what we consider to be a high end of it, and then we give you what we consider to be the low.
Like Sid said, you know, you see a lot of, happens with buildings, it happens with highways, you're not building enough for the future and you have to come back and redo. And in the long run, it costs them more money when you do something like that. And so you have a chance to do it all upfront.
And you'd think it'd be cheaper now than it will be 20 years down the road.
Yeah.
Definitely will be. I was gonna say, that's one of the problems with this particular lot. We kind of boxed everything in around it, got a water tank here, a fire all there. And you've not got no room. If you did expand, you still are faced with a parking issue that, you know, if we get many more people than what we've got right here, I've got the fire department door blocked over, but left keys in the vehicle. So hopefully it won't get no ticket. But that's, that's the issue, that's one of the issues that we have up here too. And, you know, like you said, you need a plan for the future on down the road. You know, it ain't always going to stay the same Tennessee Ridge. Everything around us is growing. And like the census proves that we're growing in the city up here also.
Do you have more questions or a discussion on this? No, we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda. And that's the BWSC invoices.
I spoke with Dean about them, and he apologizes for not being over beer. And he had some storm issues in the community and he couldn't make it down. But the problem with these invoices is, he done a environmental on a job that another engineering firm had, which that was the Last County project, which is actually still going on. But it's the environmental for it. And his explanation he gave me was that during, if you remember, we was late on getting started on this because the environmental was the holdup. Whenever we finally did get started, it was, said it was Board's Wagner's fault. Well, anyway, he had about twice as many hours involved in this by having to deal with another engineering firm. And that was the explanation that he gave to me was to build ours is what paid the bill as high, is what it was. And that's the reason why it was 4,000 more than, I guess what, we paid one payment of 4,000, and then the other one came in at 4,000. But he said that he should be here next month if y'all want to table this until he can come down. And he would talk to you. But that's more or less, because I told him what y'all wanted and why you was asking questions, because we was owing the consumption that when we paid the $4,000 that we paid for the environmental on that. He said, well, he said there was still some more stuff that was done after that was paid. And all the hours was not turned in on the first bill. But that's, that was the explanation I got from him.
Another question, was it, I don't remember what goes on, but anyway, that it took them so long to turn in these invoices, that wasn't that Nancy, that it was like the project had been over and everything, and then here they come, like a year later with these invoices?
Well, I apologize.
That was our question, and that was, that was what we were waiting on Dean to verify.
I see, I didn't, I did not ask him my question. I apologize that I wasn't at our last meeting to know what the question was y'all had for him. But you can table it until next month. And he said he was planning on being here this month.
I just wanted to know that, just, we wait until Dean is here to explain why it took a year to get some land to us, since he charges money for it.
Yes, they table it till he's here, so he can speak.
So they can explain to us. Just wait until Dean's here to explain better, give us a better understanding of how it took so long for that bill to come in, like the bill cannot be filed without his defense. Is there anything else under our business? If anybody wants to bring up, discuss?
I don't know if this is old business or not, but all these letters of people resigning from the planning commission, do we still have to have a planning commission? If we're not going to have a zoning board?
Yes, you will.
You have to?
Mm-hmm.
It's part of the freestyle, if I'm not mistaken. It forms the criteria for them.
We still got subdivision regulations that, you know, if anybody builds anything, if anybody subdivides a piece of property to less than five acres, you're going to have to, before it can be surveyed out, you're going to have, it's going to have to come from a planning commission. So you're going to have, you're still going to have a planning commission.
Is there anything else that we need under our business here? If not, we'll move on to new business. The budget amendment. All right, good. So we're just taking care of that on the other ones. The amendments and plans under the ordinances. Okay. And I think we had Ms. Gao.
Yes. I'm saying, did you'd like to speak to us? Well, just for a minute, and I appreciate y'all allowing me to speak. I'm not on the agenda. But my name's Betty Gao, and I've been working with Danny Pepper, who lives in Dover and is with the Leaf Chronicle. And he was wanting me to come. I'm sure y'all are familiar with these brochures that they put out in the newspaper that's called The Great Outdoors. This one just came out just a week or two ago. And then this is the one that's coming out toward the end of May. It's called The Summer Vacation Guide. And what he was interested in trying to do is to see if you all would consider spending any money with the county and Aaron to try to promote our city and businesses out this way, in Houston County, of course. So, I can leave these here. We're not really talking about much money. This is the ad that Cumberland City and Dover put in last year. And these little ads would be for businesses in the area that want to advertise. And they would be available like at 120 or 150 dollars. And then this ad right here, which Cumberland City was advertising, of course, their fireworks display and all of that. And that ad is going to be, is going to be 600 dollars. And if Aaron and Houston County would want to contribute some money to, you know, promoting our county out here, you know, we're not talking probably a couple hundred dollars, two, 300 dollars. So, anyway, I can leave these and y'all can look at them. And the deadline for these is, I think you said May 2nd or something like that. Hopefully it would be after your, after your next board meeting. And y'all can make, you know, make a decision about that. But, you know, it'd be something to think about. So I can leave these here if that's what y'all want to do and look at them at your leisure. And see if there would be a benefit to our county. Oh, here's the literature that goes with it. And now, these prices that are on this sheet, I'm not going to delete that because that'll just be confusing. The prices that are applicable are on the back of that brochure. And then this is the reach on the advertising. So, kind of tells how many newspapers, how many people.
This one here, did you say Cumberland City and Dover went in together?
Well, you can, no, not that one. That's just Cumberland Cities.
Okay.
But it seems like most of the counties and the small communities and, you know, surrounding us do try to advertise in these, in these, I don't know what you call them, flyers to kind of promote their counties.
Some interesting things you must look at, I've read in the paper, a lot of private information in there that you wouldn't know otherwise, that applied different places and places.
Well, and the other thing that's beneficial is that the small businesses in the county can put their own ad in there, whereas if they try to do that kind of advertising on their own, most of the time it's pretty cost prohibitive. But if we can put together a whole big page like that and spread out the cost with, you know, five or six businesses in one county and the city, or the, you know, the towns in the area, it's doable. It's cooperative advertising is what it really boils down to.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Gao?
It's just one page.
It just went one page.
For one. The whole book, just one page.
Yeah, just one, yeah, just one page. Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you for coming by and sharing with us.
Well, thank you for letting me to get that word out there. I appreciate that.
That's part of our, thank you for stopping. All right. Is there anything else under your business that we need to take up? If not, we want to report some recommendations?
I'm still a project and Dean's not here, so we'll have to wait until next month. Unless Dean has anything.
Have you got the list together on the problem there?
I have not, I have a chance.
Okay. He just, he asked me.
I left that up to Jerry and Leslie.
Okay. That's one thing he asked.
I'm delegated. I've had too much to do. I do know, I do know Old Street Road. I won't stop till Old Street Road is fixed. Yes, if y'all have to deal with it, that's how I am, so just.
I wasn't, didn't know I was on this. But Old Street Road and still a question about down around the flow meter on Mobley Lane, as far as it's built up enough on manholes and the grass and all that.
So we'll wait till next, till next, and hopefully Dean will be here to take care of all that for us then. Is there anything else that anybody needs to, under the board or?
Have you got anything you want to report about or?
Oh, yeah, I've got my monthly report. We've started putting up the new hydrant markers. We're not going to put them on the pavement anymore. These actually attach to the hydrant. Ours are blue. This is just a sample that they sent. So when you go home tonight, just kind of look around because we have got some already out. And also, I need to see where we are on getting our parking lot fixed. I know we brought that up last year and don't know where we stand on that.
It's in the budget for next year to do that.
Okay.
That's one of the things we've added this year.
It's on the list to be put in the budget this year.
Well, I thought the board appropriated some money when they talked about it before.
They just talked about it.
We talked about it. We never appropriated it.
I know, for two reasons.
I think, no, what was said was they put it in next year's budget.
Okay.
One thing that happened, it got late in the year and the weather turned bad on us. What you're thinking of is, I was trying to get the National Guard to get the old ripped out and then a base put in there of stone so we wouldn't have the problem with the pumping. And that was one of the, the board agreed to pay for the gravel if we could do that. And then once we got that set up, we had to approve the money for the concrete also.
Okay.
But I think we're going to put in there of tearing out and putting back in. We're just going to spec it the way.
Do it all.
Right. Rather than, you know, we missed last fall's opportunity with armory because we never could get together. So, you know, just hire somebody to do it all and it'll be done with.
That's all I got.
Something else? Anyone? Anything to discuss? Anything to bring up or anything? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Yes. I'm invited. We'd like to thank everyone for coming and attending the meeting and showing an interest in the business of Tennessee Ridge and.
Want to thank our sponsors, Ace Hardware at Young Rich, 721-2500. They're located in Tennessee Ridge. They're Graves Crossing, everything from making a simple key to building a whole house pattern. Next is Signature Healthcare. They're located in here in Tennessee, in Arlington Community. Long time care, short time care. They can be reached at 289-4141 for any information you may need. Next is Traditions First Bank. They can be reached at 289-5500. They're Houston County's only hometown bank. So whether you're looking to buy a home, refinance a car, finance a car, whatever, Houston County Drug Delights is a great sponsor of ours and they watch our children and different things go on in the Southern community. Like I said, Ace Hardware, one of our oldest sponsors. Our oldest sponsor is Ace Hardware, located at Graves Crossing in Tennessee Ridge. We are WCBN, Channel 12.
Yeah, I went over and talked to her. We went over to her and I answered. Oh, yeah. We went over there. We had talked to her. We, we, the minister's going over to get checked out. She wasn't wanting to go, but I said, let her have it checked out. Like I said, there's, they're monsters there. And you know, there's really no good way to go. We've done it, we've tried it on five, we've tried it on four.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Well, I'm sorry, I think they're not supposed to be going out of there.
At what point do you go?
I just thought I was ready, but I don't know. I'm sure there was something. I told her that I needed.
You know, that's every only incident we have all we want.
I know she's mad at you.
On my way, we didn't have a single call to block it. be here tonight. Thank you, dear Lord, for letting us get together and to work, uh, tonight with the city business, leading, guiding us in the direction that you'd have died to go and help us to, uh, do things that would, uh, bear help to the city and watch us. Amen. Call meeting order. Uh, roll call.
Alderman Bailey?
Here.
Alderman Campbell?
Here.
Alderman Dunn?
Yes.
Alderman Finley?
Here.
Alderman Gooden?
Here.
Alderman Leigand?
Yes.
Alderman Shires?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Partridge?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
We do have a question.
Have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed? We have any grievances? I want to run something else by the board. It's just, uh, you know, we had a truck burn up down at the, uh, McKinnon Forest Station. And to my knowledge, they hadn't got a good lead on anybody yet. If there's any way that, that the board could do it, I'd like to put up a thousand dollar reward for the arrest and conviction of. And I've asked that the county put one up for their part too, which would make it two thousand dollars. And if there's more than one involved in it, I feel sure within a week we're having a rest made. But it's, it's up to you people if you want to do that. I, I don't know. We'd have to wait till the insurance money come in, I guess, to get it. I don't know where we'd get the money.
Mayor? Oh, how would this person be able to? Sometimes you get good information.
Yet of, uh.
Without them.
Here of, uh.
Giving their source.
I'll, uh, uh, I'd like, I'd like for them to talk to our chief if, if, if we do that. Let Mark get the information and keep him, uh, secretly for whoever turns him in or turns them in. He wouldn't want everybody to know who he was. The chief would be the sole one to know and he wouldn't get no money till the arrest and conviction.
And the money could be cash.
And the money would be cash.
I mean, I'd like to add that to your.
Make the motion and I'll write it.
I'll make the motion that, uh, we offer a thousand dollars arrest and conviction. The person would notify Chief Moore and their name would never be divulged. Do you want the rest of it? The money would be paid in cash?
If that's what you want.
I had good luck with scoop system.
We've had good luck before with, uh.
Question. Just where, which, 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 um, budget would that come out of? Would you, General?
It would, um, it depends on when the rest. I would probably want to wait till insurance money got here. Our adjuster came today and looked at it. And if they pay us anything, take the money out of that and pay them. That way it wouldn't come out of.
Fire.
Out of our tax dollars.
I second the motion.
It's, it's all, it's all tax dollars, but, uh, it's different to, I'm sorry.
Crazy question. Would we legally be able to do that much money and have it unaccounted for? I mean, the law requires after, I think, six hundred dollars, you have to do it in that time.
What else do you know? We, we have in the past. What is it?
Rewards. Can, can you, um, pay out a reward without reporting it?
Uh, I, I think we could probably handle it like we do any other confidential fund. Uh, and that may be something, as Stevens, you might can help the board with it, that we can get, maybe get, get back in restitution. I, I'm not sure if we could or not.
I can check on it. I, I think that the, the bid on ten ninety-nine, they had over six hundred. At one time, they were trying to appeal that part of it. I don't know whether they ever succeeded in that. But, uh, I'll need to check with their tax attorney on that.
And do you know, do you know if, I mean, we can seek restitution for that reward or money? I'm not sure on that.
I'm not sure either.
I can check with them. I can check with them.
It's all that, I mean, we could get that money paid back through financing costs. You know, that's something to look at.
Look, while we had Channel twelve and the newspaper, I felt tonight was the time to bring that up. It's, it's, I'd like to say it's up to y'all.
You want to do a roll call?
We'll do a roll call vote.
Question.
I'm sorry.
Um, wouldn't we need to decide if it was legal before we could do it? Well, you can get the permission to do it, uh, or even put that in the motion.
I will amend.
Upon verification of legality.
I will amend my motion if this is legal, in the opinion of Ms., of Attorney Stevens. With an arson, they're going to be afraid to talk because, hey, their house will burn.
Well, could they still be kept confidential? I mean, that's. As long as it's cash. Motion to approve one thousand dollar reward for arrest and conviction, um, of fire, of McKinnon Fire?
McKinnon Fire. Where Eeyore Fire Truck was parked.
Informant, um, to notify Chief Moore. Name not to be divulged. Reward to be paid in cash upon verification of legality. Motion by Ms. Finley, second by Ms. Shires. Alderman Bailey?
No.
Alderman Campbell?
Uh, I do.
Alderman Dunn?
Yes.
Alderman Finley?
Yes.
Alderman Gooden?
Yes.
Alderman Leigand?
Yes.
Alderman Shires?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Partridge?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no. Motion carries.
Thank you all. You ought to come in on the planning commission.
Uh, the only business before the planning commission, oh, my, sorry, my microphone fell off. The only business before the planning commission was, um, Bight Simpson's property. She owns twenty-five acres and they wanted to, um, family, I think, is, um, assisting and, um, going to do, like, a subdivide, or their intention is to subdivide that twenty-five. And, uh, their first step was to take where her house is and get that approved as a separate, um, piece on that. Uh, so that was really the only business for planning commission other than continued training. The planning commission has to have four hours of training a year. Now, we, we do, we do a little bit every month and we're now at two hours.
What, that's a, what was the, um?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was.
That's okay. Um, what about the type that's up there? Is that, that's not on Bight's, is it not?
Uh, Rusty Simpson, the, the water tank, years ago, while, uh, Mayor Finley, our, uh, Mayor Largent one was here, they sold that water tank to, uh, to Rusty Simpson. We can go back in the minutes and find it in the charter. But I, I was with the police department. I remember it. It sold. Well, they, they put you and they didn't use it.
That'd be part of the plot?
Uh, the, uh, her house is on, it's a five acre plot that was separated from the other, from the total twenty-five. And why it had to come for the planning commission is because the house was built prior to ever having planning and zoning. And the house is actually closer to the road than the normal setbacks, but it was grandfathered in. So all the planning commission has approved that, that that five acres was separated from it so they can continue. So, I mean, I didn't even look at the idea of that thing. It's just the buildings and the setback.
That, that actually.
Yeah, nobody knows. Nobody knows.
Oh. New business. Let me do this one before I forget it. Friday at one thirty P.M., we got a budget committee. Uh, need, need you here. And then we got a request for, uh, uh, for a part-time person for cutting grass and what have you. But if we hire one now, I don't know what we're going to pay him. I'd, uh, for not long, tablet and talk about it another day, especially after we have our budget meeting Friday evening. That suits y'all?
I'd like to divert.
Okay. That suits me. And then you have a, uh, FAR contract in the agenda. Our, uh, contracts that they due in November on the FAR department. Uh, I want you to, uh, look at other real good and come up with, uh, have a yay and a or something. We're going to have to do some figuring and see what we can operate it for.
Mayor, this refers to attachment A as to the equipment. Could we have attachment A? It's not included in this.
Okay. I'll, I'll get it. It's in the file. I'm sorry.
Well, uh, before we come down to the end of it, we'll have attachment A for you. I heard you asking about attachment A a while ago, but I wasn't sure how that you and that. I didn't, I don't know.
It's in the file.
Okay.
Contract. I'll get it. I just overlooked it.
We'll, uh, we'll have it for you Friday evening with the other, other stuff.
That's me. It's fine.
On your communications for the mayor, um, this might be a good time since we have the, um, Town Twelve as well as, um, newspaper here to, um, let the public know about the process if they have a, um, something that needs fixed of how they call, call city off, um, and have a work order done so that it can be tracked.
Ms. Ben McGraw?
Um, as far as, as work orders, um, complaints on your water, uh, low pressure, leaks, gravel in the road, um, it's, it would be better if you had a complaint, if you called the central office, two eight nine four one zero eight. Make your complaint there at the office instead of catching, and I'm not saying you shouldn't go to your alderman, but also go to city hall so we can do a work order on it and we can track it and follow up on it and make sure that it's done instead of catching one of the maintenance crew or, or just your alderman or just the mayor. Um, call city hall and, and let us do a work order on it so we've got someone that can follow up on it and make sure that it's taken care of properly.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have anything else?
I'd like to know if the city is doing anything about the people burning houses or something.
We got State Farm Archer working on it.
Working on that.
Anything else? Uh, I don't have anything else unless there's something that I'm drastically forgetting my, I did this for a German.
You waiting for a motion? Do a German?
Yes, ma'am.
I so move.
I second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you all.
Always for many seconds.
I talked to Olivia three today. She's, I, she promised me she's going to put a article about the award and papers. Not only will we, we have, are, are you going to advertise it?
Yeah.
So, not only that, she's supposedly got a article about it too.
Well, they have, of course, today's paper had a lot of.
Yeah.
Is that the thousand dollar in, uh, that y'all offered? We're talking about the county putting ten thousand dollars. Oh, ten thousand? Yes. Because the city just approved a thousand. Well, we're going, yeah. We know that. But what we're hoping is we're going to talk to the mayor and maybe the city and see if they can come up and do a little bit more. You see what I'm saying? We won't know. That's negotiable.
Can we do some flyers too? If someone hosts them around?
We can, yeah, we can put on the, um, there's lots of more than people right here and what have you.
Yes.
And even down at the lake.
There's a, there's a, well, a community meeting Friday and then a Stewart, uh, Stewart Kenon Thursday, Saturday. So, I'll go there and I'll pass out a flyer.
If we're still discussing the same thing, if we're going to do that much money, we ought to probably put an ad in the Humphreys County and Montgomery.
Go with it.
You don't know how far out you're going to reach. It's somebody local.
If you play the local papers, yeah.
Yeah. They'll probably pick it up in the other papers.
We just need to make sure all thirteen here are for it so we prove. What about the motion? Okay. Go over to. Second. I ain't throwing money away, but. Well, here's the thing. We got this with aggression. I mean, this is what's going on. Let's clarify this motion. Okay, the motion, if I can understand it, Jim, is that the county's going to offer a reward of ten thousand dollars for a sixty-day period for any information, for the information and conviction of whomever may have done this. And then we're going to discuss with the city and whatever they can come up. Right now, we know it's a thousand. Jordan said, Mr. Jordan has been generous. He's going to come up with a thousand. So, we've got at least a twelve thousand dollar reward right there. Uh, and hopefully it may be a little bit lower. Does that sound right? And, uh, we're going to put it in our local paper and try and get supplies.
Excellent.
Okay. So, motion? All right. Take it there. You need to just say. All in favor? All opposed?
There you go.
Uh, the, uh, the other motion was that we bid out the FAR station. And also, let's talk about the truck and the equipment because we need to move forward.
Probably get on.
And, 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 and.
And.
So, the, uh, we can get, it's coordinated. I did, I did, I did have a conversation with, uh, let me go back a little history of ours. Several years ago, when you bought those engines, if you were going to build a new one, we, we financed those through World Development. Remember that? So, if you go, if you buy a new one, we could probably go through World Development and stretch it. Or, because a new vehicle would finance longer than a new one. Now, a building will finance, uh, uh, for a long time if we wanted to finance it, which I don't know that we're going to have to do that because we should get enough money to pay for that. Uh, but they'll look at the value of the, of the.
If you put it local, they'll probably pick it up in the other papers.
We just need to make sure all thirteen here are for it, so we prove.
Look at the motion, okay?
Second.
I ain't throwing money away, but you guys probably need to put it out.
Well, here's the thing, we got this with aggression, I mean, this is what's going on.
Okay, let's clarify this motion, okay? The motion, if I can understand it, Jim, yes, that the county's gonna offer a reward of ten thousand dollars for a sixty day period for any information, for the information and conviction of whomever may have done this, and then we're gonna discuss with the city and whatever they can come up. Right now, we know it's a thousand. Joe said, Mr. Joe has been generous, he's gonna come up with a thousand, so we've got at least a twelve thousand dollar reward right there. And hopefully, maybe a little bit lower. Does that sound right? And we're gonna put it in our local paper and try and get supplies. Okay? Is that motion? All right, take it there.
Any other discussion?
All in favor? All opposed?
The, the other motion was that we bid out the far station, and also, let's talk about the truck and the equipment, because we need to move forward.
Probably get on.
And the far station to furnish that truck. So the, we can get, it's coordinated, I did, I did, I did have a conversation with, let me go back a little history class. Several years ago, when you bought those engines, if you were to build a new one, we would finance those through rural development. Remember that? So, if you go, if you buy a new one, we could probably go through rural development and stretch it, or, because a new vehicle would finance longer than a used one. Now, building will finance up for a long time, if we wanted to finance it, which I don't know that we're gonna have to do that, because we should get enough money to pay for that. But they'll look at the value of the, or the life of that vehicle and tell us how long the rural development can fight it, if you wanna buy a new one. If you wanna buy a used one, then look at the life of the used one. We can go through rural development, or we can go through our regular banks like we have gone in the past. But I think, personally, I think we ought to go on, whatever you got on with it, if you wanna buy a, go on a new route, or if you wanna see about getting some pretty good used stuff, then we need to get a bid out and get some of that stuff here, so that at our next legislative body meeting, you can make a decision as to what involves, and we can get it back in operation. The same thing with equipment, we got, the equipment's gonna be, dead ones, pretty much what it takes to put on that equipment to make it work right. So that stuff can go and be bid out. I mean, you, you gotta have homes, you gotta have laws, you gotta have all this kinda stuff.
Is that equipment for any insurance that they're replacing as well, or are they procured?
Well, we got a certain vendor that was turned in on it, and they agreed to pay for what we turned in, which was five thousand and something, what, four thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars? That was equipment that was strictly on the truck, because we got down to eleven thousand four hundred dollars that was inside the building, that was accounted. So we should be getting this month. Ah, probably a hundred and forty, fifty thousand.
What type of tanker? Yeah. What tanker, probably more like a navy, probably, I'm in very, I'm aware of that.
We paid a hundred and forty, fifty, a hundred and fifty. I read the tape, I think, well, the first big thing on the name, you, I had, we don't have any, you have, I had to come in and bid off, we took, I had to, we financed it.
I, I knew we could get the numbers on these things, they'd be very complex, Commissioner here.
Give me a bill of yours to end the year for me.
Yes.
That makes, okay, that way, and then, you know, once we get all that, I can, I can have the financials. We'll, but you cost it, we'll need a new, some, if you've got a following, probably, okay?
Motion's not enough? That we give you permission to get a tech bids and write out the specs for both of the new pieces of equipment and the vehicles.
Where'd you get that other vehicle? We, we, we bought a lot of our used vehicles from State County. What I'm trying to say, you could, Mr. Joe, I, 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 they got far stations out there.
I intend to have far stations.
And that's one of the things, they, they operate, they buy used equipment, they first do, they get it out, and, and we always bid ourselves. A little bit, good, though, can we help them? Motion, does George want to, is that a random? Okay. Another discussion, I'm, we're doing here.
I don't know.
On this?
No, no, in favor.
On this one, in all favor? All opposed? Okay, let me show you one of the, guys, this is, this is your area that we actually covered in, if you can see it, I'm passing over it, but what it shows is where our far stations are, and it gives you an idea of our coverage that we have, okay? Now, that's, that's phase one. If we did phase two, then you would pick up, and this is not exact applications, but if we added, if we ever decided to add a couple more stations, you pretty well can get most of the county fully covered with far stations. I just want this back. I don't have anything else I'd ask for.
Do you know if you reached, sorry, you reached near with Tennessee, mentioned with Tennessee?
Oh, yeah. Tess reached, been real good, kept up, called me first thing when I got in that morning, and said, George, we'll, we'll be glad to cover that end of the county while y'all going through this period, and he said, another thing that we, we need is, we need some people to help. I don't know how many people to help in their department, but they don't have enough to just man everything. So, I said, that don't be a problem, I said, we got plenty of staff, and I have Dave, get with Spencer Ryan, who's their chief, and they worked that out to where any call that takes place in that end of the county, Tessie Mitchell handled it until we get back in business. So, we need to just thank those guys for some, for their help. But Tessie Mitchell wants you to take over there. But we don't, we don't wanna take over there. We're not in that business, we just, we just want to fly a truck.
What's they gonna tell me? They are, they, no, no, we'll take it then.
Well, we're not in the business to take a little far truck, we just want to fly a truck.
Two, two things. One, how many here have computers, access to the internet and use email types of? Everybody? Who does not? Anybody that does not? So, everybody's comfortable with using Word and things of that nature, and searching the internet?
I think for what?
A lot of this, I'm just trying to see if, if that was the case, if we were deficient in that, that maybe we could get Kenny to, at the library, to give us classes and things that were, were deficient as commissioners, and, cause at this day and age, you've got to be able to do that kinda stuff.
We have a class down there now, don't we?
Yeah, it's a real beginning class, they, they start it next Monday, I think, at nine o'clock. Yeah, Catherine, okay, very nice to talk about. The other thing is, I make a motion that we set the budget committee, the same terms of the budget committee, and to do it at the same time we have a budget meeting to discuss the road specs for a new road, and we get that started right off.
Well, you'll have to make a motion, just do it.
Well, you need, you need to do it, we don't need to drag our feet. It's put on our agenda. And then we'll, I'll give you some extra, okay, I'll be there, I'll feed you, do you some, what have I give, and I'll give you ideas about what other people do.
We'll, we'll, in the next month, we should start, you know, a budget, you can't, you can't find a lot of money, but, but it's back to us to start passing up into a storm. That's something that's a good one. You know, we'll know until, you know, they have a bunch of new looks, but right now, that's what I get. I will say that we did get our first large check from FEMA, and we're going through that now.
Are we gonna, are we, if the government shuts down tonight, are we gonna shut down some money again?
No, we already got, we got a check for nine hundred and nine thousand dollars, just like this one, and...
Are we expecting anything else? Because after the night, we're gonna get...
And we will be, we got, when we get this money, first, our staff, and I'm not exaggerating, that file, he does, all right, that couple of style and department, schools, solid base, general file, you know, all that's in there, that we have to go through and sort out, who gets what part of that? Now, the larger part of that, of course, we don't, but, and seven dollars for the schools, they have a part of that. But when we go through with that, the money's already at the trustee's office, and we're going through it right now to make sure we don't have any errors, cause if you do, you'll have the department setting out, and, and, and each department will actually go over themselves. So we're, we're going through it to make sure it's right, and that money will be dispersed. It looks like some of the highway department's gonna, right now, is somewhere around seven hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand, under, under this particular.
Did we take a loan out for some of these?
Well, the highway department took a loan out from the, from debt service, which will be making payments on in regards to...
Was there, was there any else they got for the loan?
Schools.
What'd you say, that was schools?
Schools, schools, that, so they're gonna be, they'll be, they'll be making payment back in regards to schools. But that's not all of the money that we'll get. Actually, we've got, picked up, it's in for about a million or five. When you say that, that's a total amount, you don't get all of that, you only get, there's ten percent that they hold back, the federal government pays a certain amount, and then we get a certain amount from the state. Okay, so, but we got by then, now, something thousand dollars.
Is there a wish, if we pass out, we get, we didn't, kind of get?
They're still, I got it, no, no, they're still in limbo, as to what they're gonna do in regards to that.
We got the stuff, we, we apply to the highway department, highway, and...
No, that's, we got the application in, but not for the... The applications that we got in, we turned in an application for a million, what, million eight, I don't know what it was, with the, or the nine one one building and the highway department, and we've not heard anything back on those applications yet, okay, just for them to approve. Now, the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, we already got a letter out saying that's approved, and actually, I signed a contract to live, and it's been sent back to the state, but they not signed it, since that took place, they've had, has come back with some more regulations, and that's, I'm telling you, it's, it's that, they come back with some more regulations now saying, we don't know if we're gonna fund these or not, and so, we're waiting to see. We've all, I wrote, I know, I've already wrote one letter explaining what we're doing to try and clarify our project, but there are some counties that they have only had a signed contract, and it's been money. I'm not talking about the county signing the contract, I'm talking, I'm not talking about, the state signed it, and the county signed it, and those people went out and spent money, and now they're telling you not to help. So, I'm kinda glad we're, we're not in that. I think we're good, ours worked out, but it's still in limbo right now. So, that's why we're not moving any further in regards to our purchase of our land. We got as far as we've done, I've signed the contract, I'm waiting for them to, state to sign it, give it back to me, and say, we're ready to move on. And I have some communications with Miss Lynn and Cox, I don't know if you probably know what I'm talking about, today, and Halla Love, with the state in regards to that, and they're, they're trying to get a clarification from them. It was all, to my understanding, it was all great with the people that Nashville was working with, and the other people they were working with, the city, and then when they sent it to Washington, some, got a little flag, and that's the stop, we're following. So, we'll, we'll see, hopefully, I mean, we've, we've got three good projects that we're willing to do, and I, I'll tell you, I've never, for a long time, I've never had to stay after you get a letter approving a grant, come back to you and say, hey, we don't know now whether it's gonna be approved or not. First, to tell them, most time, you get that letter, hey, your grant's been approved, and you look, they're telling you to move forward, there's no, they send you a contract, you sign it, it's...
Well, you know the question. The Senator Tessie, you might tell me that we've got so many kids over there, and...
It's, it's, we have up there, it's not uncommon, a hundred to a hundred twenty-five kids on Friday night, it's really, it's really grown.
I mean, it's such a good problem.
And we'd like to, we'd like to move, expand.
They have been on six miles, a great amount, but...
In fact, the case of the location, there's not a lot of engagement.
This comes from somebody, was it FCE announced it up? I don't know where he talked, he, he spoke to them, was talking about that he had requested them to bring food on Friday night, because there's a bunch of kids that come up there that's got a quarter to buy candy, and they leave hungry, and ask them if they brought some soup. We don't got anything on budget, we fix, we give...
He has money to buy stuff that he sells, but I think, you know, he does that for, that's good PR, those ladies like doing that too. You see what I'm saying? It's a public service type thing, and they give it away to the kids that...
It kind of bothered me when you said that. Kids that leave, they're probably hungry.
But they're pretty affluent up there, but they are having a big progress. They, you know, it's, you know, we got out of there one year, and then it's come back to, like I say, they have a hundred, a hundred twenty-five kids, and really, that's, a hundred is enough. When you get above, and we've talked about as a board, the board bids every month in regards to, we've talked about, you know, saying, hey, it's just a certain number, one or other, but you hate to do that, because, you know, those kids need some more to be...
It's just, it's a good problem, man.
And it is a good problem, but, you know, a lot of people, you know, you, we're the only county I know of around that has, I don't know of another county that has one, Dinsen County or something like that.
Well, the center doesn't, the center doesn't people from Humphers County, Stewart County, but we do have some cases. It's not just...
No, 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 they're open on, let's see, Tuesday, Thursdays, Fridays, and I have on Saturdays. They don't stay, they don't stay on a late on Saturdays. They don't open for, for parties, like if a birthday party, somebody wants to have a birthday party up there, and they pay, I forget, some hundred dollars or whatever, I can't remember the exact fee, and then they have the use of the hospital by themselves on a particular time.
David Cook, they run?
Yeah, David Cook and Harold, Harold, both of them are, they did a good job, and then Mr. Carpenter was up there too.
What's his age? Was he slim? He just changed, changed since he's been there. It's, it used to be seventh through twelfth grade, and he's back to have a sixth, and so it's kinda added to...
What happened?
That might help, that might help alleviate some of the numbers if you go back to the other...
Well, here's the problem that you get into, when they start getting, they don't wanna be, then, when they start getting looking to the older friends...
Then it's gonna be the sisters.
They, well, they're more trouble, they know something, because they haven't been talking about that.
The longer they get in more trouble, they wanna calls, and you really have to, and he backed down, so I don't know if seniors even, you know, twelfth, twelfth grader really don't vote their whole lot at all. So, maybe you take the twelfth off.
You just, you just, once they get into twelfth grade, they don't have, I mean, it's the youngest.
Parents not usually play for babysitters, but...
No, no, it's not, yeah, you can...
But you have to do some...
Cause there are children that get off, when school's out, those good bus will let them off there, and they'll go over there, but it's not huge numbers for them, it's just, they like to go up there. The lady, and I don't, I don't, but I know a lady that has two kids that's, her plus me, she has two children, so, that's good, that's a good problem, man. Actually, you know, it's, it's something, you know...
Gee, let me back up on things, I had a phone call from a lady, I was talking to her, she's not my district, but anyway, she said that she had a daughter that, that applied her help from FEMA after the flood. She received a letter saying that she was gonna have to pay this money back.
There are some of those out there.
Well, that's my question, I hadn't heard of any, and this is what I told her, I instructed, I asked her to call your office to see if we had any...
I've had, uh...
Is it a bogus, is it a bogus letter, or is it a legit?
That is, that's legitimate, that, you might want to explain that, Dave.
I talked with FEMA all this, I talked about, I think, I talked to FEMA, there's a number of people from my county have received letters, not sure how many. One is, I was told, look, the people did not make a mistake as residents apply. The application is such, I mean, people have no idea, not anybody's money, or something of that nature, so they think they have to, hey, wait a minute, you gotta pay the money back. They made a mistake, they should not have issued the money out, but they did. And now, I said, I told people, I can help you, I will, but...
They're spent a lot.
If you, they can, but wait first, they can, they can, uh...
They can appeal.
They can appeal, yeah, well, they can't, they ask them to make payments while they appeal, now, whether they do or not, that's a different...
You were in the same meeting that I was in, did that man ever mention, because we asked that very question, is there any downside to us not accepting?
No, and see, and that's what this lady said, that the, that the letter stayed in there, because we often, we often, we often pay, that's exactly why they're having to pay the money back.
We had thirty days to get in, and we didn't, but we were never once told.
That man never said anything about that.
And we asked those questions, we said, is there any downside to us not getting in? He said, well, in two years, you're probably gonna be forced in, and we said, well, administration may change, so we're just gonna... That's what I called our chief, oh, man, I said, we, we were not informed. But you remember Dave, him ever telling us?
No, no, no.
We didn't.
Well, I was, that's all the one that I heard, we could, crazy, I didn't say anything about that.
Now, what you said, again, I didn't get to hear all of that, like that.
What I said?
Yeah, like the lady, I didn't hear what's...
She, she called me, and she was just questioning, she said that her daughter had applied, and I think it was like five thousand dollars, or she... Five thousand five hundred from FEMA. They sent her a letter telling her, in this letter, that she was gonna have to pay this money back, because the county didn't get in on the insurance, passed the thing about FEMA insurance program, therefore, the people in Houston County was gonna have to repay money. And my question to that, she was the only one that I have even talked to about it, and that's the reason why I'm bringing it up tonight, cause I hadn't heard of anybody else getting a letter, and I was just curious, I, I asked her to call G E's office to, to see some heads up on it, you know, and I hadn't heard anything else from her, and apparently she's called a few other...
Yes, calling.
Okay, cause that's the only phone call I've got. Okay, because that's the only phone call I've got.
She's now with you.
Okay.
That's about seventeen, seventeen.
Seventeen ladies, I'm about that. She never sent me any, any, too.
And it was, it was, it was the girl who paid it. And wasn't actually, she wasn't actually the one that got the money with her daughter, who wanted to sell your money.
The camera, the road, the house.
Anything else?
Washington, too, sure.
And she took the money.
I'd take a moment to thank our sponsors, Ace Hardware. They can be reached at 721-2500. They're located in Tennessee Ridge. They're gray's crossing everything from making a simple key to building a whole house pattern. Next is Signature Healthcare. They're located in here in Tennessee, in Arlington Community.